...the county. But at public forums I've attended, when I spoke to those two separately because I didn't have the chance to ask a question, both of them said they deserved the job because they'd been doing the job for a long time. And one of the guys said he had, the job had been stolen from him several years ago and he deserved to get the job back.
We know who that was.
I asked a similar question on the Facebook page which Chairman Cohen directed me, but a few days later, even as of right now, my question still has not been posted and it says it's pending. But I can guarantee you I saw a dozen or so restaurant postings and other things. I don't think it's too much to ask as a citizen to know what's going on in the community. I'll, again, as a glad for punishment, I've watched the last two or three YouTube videos of commission meetings, which is great. I mean, I was able to learn some things, but there's not a simple place where I could share with my local neighbors and other people about what's going on, about these projects or these things that I've mentioned in my notes.
Well, you need to address a couple of those questions because the county doesn't have any jurisdiction or say in what's going on in Lenore City or Loudoun City. So they have their own agenda and everything with what they're going to build and what's coming there.
Loudoun County.
Well, but it's, the county doesn't, and those are city-funded projects, so if you want to know what's going on in the cities, you have to go to their webpage.
And I have done that.
Yeah.
Nothing there.
Nothing there. One thing that you brought up, growth plan.
Base work.
Our EDA, Jack Wallace, have received a $50,000 grant. And in this grant, it's going to bring out, bring in outside people to look at our needs, infrastructure, education, various things, revenue streams, and hopefully the grant will be completed sometime in maybe August. And once that is presented to us, hopefully we can take a look at it and, you know, listen to the individuals that were doing this and it can give us solid information on how we can move forward in planning in the future. And it would be maybe three, five, or 10-year programs hopefully on down the road.
And that would be on his site, the EDA Economic Development site.
And it was very...
You can pull up on the county website because it says departments.
Yeah, well, and to that point.
Yeah.
When you go to departments and look at documents within the departments, there's a whole lot of documents there from like 2012 to 2014. I don't see a lot of recent documents that are there.
Well, I'll have to agree with you on that. On the county's website, I don't think that we have done a very good job. We've talked about it, if talking about it would have accomplished it, we'd have been done, we'd have had a new one and had it improved, but seems like all we've done is talk about. But I would have to agree with you, it's not always current and up to date and, and not always easy to find when you're going on, when you look for stuff. But again, I'll just have to point that out. I think we've tried a couple of times, haven't we, man?
Yes.
To update our webpage, do a better job with our county webpage and keep it current. I'm like, yeah, if something's going on today, then it ought to be whoever's in charge of the webpage, it ought to be in their hands and it should be on there. It shouldn't be a big time lapse.
Well, now, I do believe our agenda is always on the website before the meetings.
And so are the minutes.
And the planning documents are always up to date on the website, so I mean, there's...
I know much of the waste documents are up to date.
But we could do a lot better.
Well, let me be very clear. Lots of people can point to specific things that you could find if you go here and if you go there, but there's not a single place that, that I found where you can find a what's new or what's exciting or something to brag about. Exactly. Something to brag about.
Well, that would take a full-time person and I don't know how many of the last four years of commission meetings you've watched, but most of the people on this commission aren't too keen on good-paying positions in Loudoun County. So if you want one of those websites, something's got to change. So I would encourage you to consider that.
And honestly, I don't even, I'm assuming it's like a WordPress website. I'm assuming it's not anything that complicated. You could assign somebody with just a simple page within that that says what's new or what's exciting or what questions do you have. And somebody, if it is truly a WordPress site, something simple, and I know it is because I looked underneath the covers, you can do that on websites, it's not that complicated website. So all I'm saying is we may not need a full-time person to do that. Maybe all we need is the information gathered in a central place, the things that you guys feel is most important for the county residents to know about, and let's share it. Because what, honestly, I've been asking, and Mayor Radsaw can probably tell you this, I've been asking for three years, four years about broadband. I can't get any updates other than it's not this department, it's not that department, you've got to wait on somebody else. I've been asking about, and I think it is in the, in the city, but the new Yogi Bear campground or whatever this is being built off of corporate park.
And that's in the city.
Yeah, and that's what I said, it may be in the city. But there's, there's got to be something going on in the county. We can point to all the things that are going on in the city, but surely to goodness, there's something going on that's exciting in this county.
Well, since the county governments got out of broadband, how long ago, Mayor? It's been a while.
That could be the hot topic with the ARCA funding.
But it used to go through the local governments, it was affordable and accessible.
Right.
But now it is entirely in the hands of the company of Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, whoever's doing it. And it is extremely cost prohibitive. Now, I don't know many county governments that could just roll out the checkbook and say, we're going to put in 150 miles of broadband. Do you know?
Growth counties can.
Well...
Growth counties can.
Uh, yeah.
When they're profitable. When a business is here to make money, it's not a donation. So when they can't make money on houses to buy their broadband, they're not going to come and make the investment.
But then it's a trade-off if you want broadband.
I don't disagree, but that's not the, the situation at hand. He's asking for information on it and you're saying, well, it's up to these companies and the reason the companies aren't doing it is because they're not making any money.
Well, that...
If they can't make money, they're not going to come.
It wouldn't matter if, according to their cost, it wouldn't matter. Julia, you know, if I was in real estate and wanted to sell houses, I'd jump on that.
I sell houses whether they're here or there. Seventeen counties, friends, so it doesn't matter if they're here or not. The point of it matters is if a business wants to make money, we're not, we're not open for business. We're saying no thanks. So why would they come?
We're entirely open for business. Like I said, I just, you know, maybe we all need to go into selling real estate so that we can jack that up.
Maybe you should.
And vote in our best interest.
I mean, good luck.
Vote in our interest.
Oh, you should vote for your people's best interest.
Well, if I could just add one point, I want to create World War III years, but I appreciate the energy, but if I could just state that for anybody that's interested, I did contact the governor's office, they did put me in touch with Mr. Zachary at Charter. He has, his company has requested grants to build out broadband for the rural areas that do not have it. So if anybody asks, that's what's going on now, and they should have some information by May or June of this year about what's going on. Yes?
One thing, I think you have to go back and look at the laws that were changed back in either 92 or 94 when the FCC did away with deregulation, communication, air, the airline industries. Who's paying a higher price now for that decision that was made back in 92 or 94 whenever the laws were changed? And Nick Pavilis, we had an agreement, we were dealing with Charter back some time ago. They were supposed to have built a place on Highway 72 where we could put, people could come in, request service, pay the bills, things like this. And through negotiations, it went south of the border, they loaded up the truck and they moved to Fairgate and say, hi deos. So, uh...
And again, I'll, I'll sit down, but again, if I could just ask people, and I'm willing to help myself.
Right.
But there has to be some way, this is an incredible county, I moved here in 2013, moved down on the lake, my neighbor, neighbors may want me to move by now. But they keep asking me for information and quite honestly, I'm not sitting in your seats. I'm more than happy to carry information back. Heck, I'm willing to start my own Facebook page for just community activities, whatever needs to happen.
Why did you move here?
Because it's a smaller town.
A smaller town? And you built on the lake where you've got plenty of room?
13 acres.
Yeah. So you're not, there's not 15 houses on either side of you within five feet of your house?
No.
You moved here because you liked the rural, the scenery and being able to have some sort of...
In all fairness, I moved here because my wife said she wanted to live on the lake.
But I understand.
You listen far away.
That's why a lot of people want to move here, you know? They just want to love us to death. Buddy?
And, and to address... I don't hate that.
Just to let you know, we have two IT people and that's it, that service the whole county as far as like this building and the county government office building and then goes out to the other offices. So I think that that is our challenge too, is to get somebody who can actually, because it's going to take somebody who has a little IT experience and can actually put information together to put it on the website.
If it'll help, I'll, I'll do the writing articles for free if somebody will just give me access to that page. And I'll be happy to get with you guys and you can tell me what needs to be done.
And I have always said that I think it would be more feasible that like each department had access to their part of that website, but that's not the way they have it set up. They have it set up that you have to submit everything to the IT department and then they upload it to the website. And I think that's a wrong way to do it because like I'm on the Solid Waste Board and it'd be a whole lot easier for me if I could just go right ahead and upload straight to my web part of the page instead of I have to send an email and send it on to somebody else and hope that they get it on there in time.
Mr. Mears, I think that's your point.
Yes.
And we have a brain trust at the high schools and if we could utilize some of those students in helping develop a webpage and put those students to...
Yeah.
I know, one year crazy, who was it? You had an intern from Loudoun High School, she helped do the budget process and you, I thought it was a design from like an adult or a company. So we've got a brain trust in the high schools and we could do...
State, University of Tennessee?
To Mr. Moore's point, uh, just, just as somebody that tries to put together information, y'all may know I have a website, I don't know if you know it or not, but it's hard. It's hard to know what's going on and I tried just to, I stopped at Taco Bell and said, what are y'all doing? I need to know. People won't know about Taco Bell. What's being built here, what's being built there and try to do. Getting it, getting it posted isn't the challenge. It's actually somebody finding out what it is, you know? And some, you know, a lot of stuff going on, may not even be government-related, uh, what has to come through Jim Jenkins and the Planning Office. Of course, there's documentation, but a lot of things that happen don't even hit those things. Are they hit that one of the cities or the other city? So the county's not aware, but just finding out the information, that's the harder part for me. If I can find out, I'll let folks know.
Thank you, everyone.
You were the...
The deregulation come up under, it was underneath the Hasard administrations when the deregulation happened. Right now, the state's got a grant that they're covering 80% of the fees and charges associated with broadband to rural areas. Now, I know the Charter Spectrum is chomping at the bit as is AT&amp;T and I'm sure everybody is about broadband. Now, one of the things Charter Spectrum says is the more skin you have in the game, faster you go to the top of the list to get the services. And so that's one of the things that the ARCA money, of course, they're playing around with the ARCA money. And so I, I think, you know, whatever we put towards that would be where we land on that list is for it to happen. I know LUB is working with Charter, not exactly sure of their plans, uh, and of course the LCUB is looking to get into the internet business as a whole. So the, I think as we get closer to, to start distributing our ARCA money, I think that we'll see just how far to go for one thing, we'll see, hopefully see some true fruition because I know we've shared many emails, several, every time you know, AT&amp;T tries something, it doesn't work. Anything that's not hardwired, you know, one thing Loudoun County doesn't have is flat land. If it's not hardwired in the ground, it's not going to go very well.
The amount of money we have in ARCA would not touch.
No.
Exactly.
Would not reach.
Uh, I don't want to say that.
Ten million dollars.
I've got the price it would cost, and their numbers are off, Stephen. The numbers that Charter Spectrum gave me were way low and even it was a incredible, uh, I don't know, I've, I've got it somewhere on my desk, I don't want to misquote it, but it was, you know, well beyond what we could ever afford even with ARCA money, probably with Knoxville's ARCA money, we couldn't do it. But the state's throwing that in, hopefully encouraging, uh, communities, especially rural communities like ours to pitch in and use it to help get the broadband out. I agree, we are, we're too good of a county to sign, to sign now.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, that concludes the public comments.
I arrived late and I didn't have time to sign in. May I speak, please?
No, no, I saw your exit, you're too late. Mark Patel said teach you to be on time.
Sorry. Been out campaigning. I'm surprised, I'm surprised Richard didn't sign in there.
I love it. Download some short. My name is Pat Hunter and I agree with the previous speaker about better communication. You looked at the website and I think it's sort of a daunting experience to try to put a new website and try to also keep your old information, which is very valuable. But I agree with the speaker, we do need better communication. I think that a newsletter like the Morse City does on a regular basis, that would be helpful. I think that in, um, in an age where we have...
Is that actually a paper newsletter or...
It is, yes.
It, it is, but if we could do it on the website and put it out.
I just wondered.
They do, they send it out, but it's also available electronically. So that's a possibility. I also think that in, in an era of instant messaging, we have instant messaging, we can communicate with each other, we have to have a better way of letting people know before it happens and not after it happens. So that is a challenge, but I think that we can have contributing editors from different departments that may want to focus or feature something such as recycling. They can do that and submit it so, you know, we know what the various departments are working on. So that's a possibility. With regards to the agenda today, I'd also like to speak about item eight under Commissioner Tinker, the storage building for county records. I think that if the county would at some point consider forming a committee, it would be nice if we also involved the purchasing department since they will be involved from beginning to end. I think the purchasing director is a must on a committee. The maintenance, because the maintenance will always be involved in the maintenance of buildings. I mean, we need his input. I think the library board because of the, or the library, because of the archives, it would be good to have the librarian involved. Also the records commission and commission, of course. So that is my request, if you consider doing something like that. I think input from these various groups will only enhance the discussion. With regards to something that is not on the agenda, I would like to talk about the solid waste contract proposal. It's going to be coming before the solid waste commission next week. I missed the last meeting. I couldn't avoid it, but I had to. But anyway, long story short, there is Republican, Republic came back with their counter, which we're going to be talking about. But I would like to request from you, you are a stakeholder, that we put the contract proposal on hold and I'm going to tell you why. I think we have some serious concerns that need to be addressed first. We can't enter into a proposal or an extension under these circumstances. We have a problem currently with Republic or actually it's, it's Waste Services, a subsidiary of Republic, and they are not doing a good job about picking up garbage at our schools. Now, I've been talking with the schools about this problem. It started in September of 2021 and it's been going on for a while. I went this weekend, Mr. Tinker contacted me on Friday. I went to the tech center and I took pictures and yes, the garbage was eeping over again. And this is totally unacceptable. Our stakeholders, whether it's the county, the cities, the schools, we are obligated to take our garbage to the landfill. That is what it says under the interlocal agreement. The same interlocal agreement says that we, Solid Waste Commission, control the tipping fees. However, it is Republic who sets the tipping fees. Now, when we have a contract for our county and our schools to have their garbage picked up by Waste Services Republic and it's not being picked up, and you can't complain or if you do complain and ask for credit and the credits aren't forthcoming, we have a problem because they simply can't walk away and say, I'd like to try another company because they can't. Now, that is a problem when the landfill operator sets the tipping fees because in essence they have a monopoly. They can, since they set the tipping fee, they can give themselves a favorable tipping fee like they have and their competitor, they don't do that. And, you know, case in point, in 2011, it was put out the bid and Santec won the contract. In 2016, the vendors, other vendors, other hauling companies, garbage services, did not respond to it because of that very problem. Santec sets the tipping fee. So they're at a great disadvantage. We have a problem. It has to be addressed. The other concern that I have is that we, the Solid Waste Commission, we are not being paid on time by Republic. I checked this morning for the month of March. I think the letter was dated March 3rd, was for the previous month, we still have not been paid. I wish that this was an anomaly, but it's getting to be more frequent and these issues have to be addressed. We cannot start a, a contract with someone who is treating their stakeholders, in my opinion, they're not treating us right. So that is my concern. I will bring it up at the meeting next Tuesday, but I'm asking the Solid Waste Commission and the county commission to ask them to put this off until these issues are thoroughly vetted and addressed. Thank you.
Well, I've heard, I'd heard about the school situation that it had become, I mean, schools, trash dumpsters running over onto the school grounds.
And, and, and that is serious because this is not only a garbage pickup problem, it is a health problem. They can close us down. The health department could close us down under those circumstances, so this is serious.
And that's Republic's responsibility to make sure that that gets picked up?
Republic owns Waste Services and Waste Services, our contract that we had in 2011, when we bid it out in 2016, we really don't have a current contract.
All I can say, if, if they can't get the garbage picked up, especially at schools on time and on a regular basis, we sure as heck don't need to sign a contract with them.
Well, I agree. We, we have problems that we need to address and I think Teleco Village is experiencing garbage pickup problems too.
Pat, I can tell you, my phone has melted down about garbage not being picked up. It almost got to the point if I had anything other than a Miata, I'd go pick it up myself. They were running the phone so hard. And I got to tell you something, one, they wrecked one garbage truck on Toca on the bed. I understand, it, it happens. Welcome to running it quick.
One truck can't pick up everything at Teleco Village if one is down.
Just listen to what I'm saying. And they said they didn't have a backup truck. That's a systemic problem. If I did that when I worked, Rich will tell you, I'd be walking out with my banker's box, leave the keys at the receptionist's for your company car and have a good day. That's all I'm saying. I wouldn't sign it.
Well, we also haven't done a financial assessment to make sure, to ensure that, that we are in fact going to get the projected amount of money that we're supposed to get. One thing that I did notice in this last summary that shows a breakdown of where our waste is going to or coming from, I know this is the city of Athens, so I'm going to be asking how much garbage we're going to be getting from Athens because, you know, even though we reduced it to 75 miles, it's still unacceptable in my opinion because when that landfill was first formed, it was supposed to have no county waste. So 75 miles, in my opinion, is still too far. And if we, if they have signed a contract and they're going to be bringing in more waste, and this isn't just an anomaly, then we have concerns, especially when we are supposed to be reducing our waste by 25%. So, thank you very much.
Does the, does the Waste Commission feel like there's an urgency that, that they proceed at this rate of signing the contract?
There's some that feel that, I do not. I feel like we have to vet this and address all these other issues. We, we can't start off on the, on the wrong foot.
How late have they been in the payments?
Well, the, the letter that was dated March 3rd, we still haven't received it and it's April 4th.
And you said that was for the, it's like February, they got billed in March for February, so we're missing February and March?
No.
No?
No.
We run, we run one month behind.
Got it.
So, you know, for the March 3rd letter was for February, we have not received that. But this isn't the first time. You know, usually they're running late, even though the letter may say the first of the month, it may be the 28th.
Santec ran late too.
Well, I, I don't know about that.
Yes, Santec ran late too.
I know that they are not getting paid and that is a problem.
I could say to you too, if you would like to come to the Solid Waste Commission meeting, we meet on Tuesday.
I know, I've been there.
I know, so.
I'm just saying...
Some of these questions can be addressed then because we are not the Solid Waste Board right now.
I understand.
No, but we are, you are a stakeholder.
But we are a major stakeholder.
Yes, you are. You are a major stakeholder.
I just wondered how long it'd been because, you know, if, I don't know what their financial setup is, but I don't know how much interest you gross, gross off that amount of money over a 30-day period before they paid it out.
Well, and, and I don't know, I, I think that the schools had, had requested a credit and I think that is still outstanding. I'll have to ask...
If they're going to make the kind of money they're making off this, the service ought to be five-star, you know, beyond making the money that they're making off this contract.
When's the new contract?
It's not like we can go to someone else either.
When's the new contract? At the next meeting, two weeks? Like that conversation?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
We have another conversation about it. It is not civilized.
We had no sound.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
But you do have a say...
So next week, another meeting to talk about it again.
But you do have a say with regards to the contract between Loudoun County, the Loudoun County Board of Education and Waste Services slash Republic. You do have a say about that and that is one concern that I have. The garbage is not being picked up like it should be. It has been a longstanding problem since September and also it's questionable whether they have given us the credit that the schools requested.
Thank you, Pat. For those in the village that are here, it darn near melted down next door over the garbage pickup, but that's all I'm going to say on it. Okay. Jim Jenkins, 6A.
I'll make a motion, we vote on this without reading it again, please.
Okay, we got a motion to vote on it without reading it again.
I'll make a motion, we accept resolution A.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second that since it's Tuesday, one.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Tammy, call a roll on this one.
Mayor?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Siderfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster? Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Make a motion, my own. Well, they just said we're out there.
I'm just...
I went down a bit, at least, fell was in, uh...
Hang on. Go ahead.
They're already, they're already cutting their house seat in, great guy out of Alabama, a lot of fun to talk to. He said he'll try to get her out. I said, if you, if you don't, it's not a problem, a commercial residential, they're putting their house on a little mini farm down there, so I'm more than happy to make a motion to approve the rezon on this one.
Okay, do we have a second?
I do.
Commissioner Duff seconds the motion for the second resolution B. Any further discussion?
What's going on the mini farm? What's it going to be?
It's mini animals, I guess.
Donkeys.
Any other questions?
Is that mini animals or many animals?
Many, many animals.
We've been off the path for it and not already. Okay. Yes approves it, no denies it, call a roll.
Hurley? Aye. Siderfield?
Aye.
Whitfield.
Aye.
Cullen.
Yes.
Jeff.
Aye.
Shaver.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Mears.
Aye.
The carries. Thank you, Jim, have a safe trip. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, Susan Husky, come on up here and tell us about the UT and the copy machines and the age-related repairs on the courthouse.
Can we do all these at one time?
I make a motion, we approve A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Slag.
That's gonna be my motion.
Okay.
I, I would like to add, these comments about Republic before, before I forget it. I've spent three months trying to get credits back from the schools to Norval. I have talked with the general manager of the landfill side, I've talked with the general manager of the pickup side, I've got numerous emails. He assured me it would be taken care of. It's gotten so bad that I've got the school board keeping a spreadsheet of missed pickups. Now they're starting to charge us about a hundred dollars a month late fees, so we're not charging them a late fee for not paying us, but they're charging us a late fee for withholding $700 from, from missed visits back in September, October, November.
I hope you don't plan to pay those late fees.
I don't think we will.
No, you won't pay the late fees. I will guarantee you, we won't pay any late fees.
I would not suggest paying the late fees. I would suggest not paying the whole bill, because it's been that bad, but anyway, y'all's information.
Susan, I was, I was told they got that straightened out with you, and that, that you were getting those reimbursements. I wish you had contacted me so that I could get back in touch with them.
I'm not receiving one single reimbursement. Larry Jameson's reached out to them, Mr. Brewster's also reached out.
You will hear from them tomorrow.
We have a motion on the floor to accept A through D.
A through C.
C, okay.
I mean, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
No, it was.
Somebody else banned it already, second.
Thirty.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, yes is to approve, no is to deny, call the roll.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Okay, that carries. D.
Age-related repairs of the courthouse. The primary ones, and Mayor, do you want to address this, or you want me to go ahead with this?
Well, Susan, I have a question. I read an article in the News Herald, and I see Mr. Commissioner Satterfield here.
Picture, his picture pointing.
Oh, yeah, it's a picture pointing. But I don't remember receiving anything. I thought we were all gonna get to go down there and take a look, and I didn't receive anything.
I was asked to make a.
Yeah, that was my call, just for the Budget Committee. That way, we didn't have to advertise the whole thing. I'll be more than happy to let anybody in. Like I said, that was on me, we just did the budget, because we had discussed it there right back before the entire commission.
Well, I was under the understanding when we met last time, that when we talked about it, that we were all gonna get to meet, because just in case we had questions for the art, for the engineers, so.
The Budget Committee did ask questions.
I didn't realize it was Budget Committee.
But we don't have any answers to their questions. We don't know what they discussed.
Uh, I, I'll tell you what, just, just for the point of discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion, we approve the two items that were discussed. It's the extra Sister Joyce, the thing, and the storm windows on the.
What about the piers?
Yeah, what, the three things, yes, all those structural things, and, and what the structural parts are, and it, it, it makes sense, and it's not that much money, it's gonna give better support for the, well, the whole thing sets on itself from the third floor down, and so if they ever will put heavier files in, in some of the second-floor offices, I guess main-floor offices, this is gonna give more stability underneath. It's all back under the really oldest part of the courthouse. There are some joists that are gonna have to have Sister Joyce on it, and they'll have, they've got some piers that are a tad crooked here and there. I mean, you know, they're 150 years old, so there's some situations, but it all made a lot of sense. And then we found out that they're going back in those, into the, the windows are gonna be the original historic windows that were there. I didn't realize that. I thought most of them had been destroyed, but obviously not. They took them out, they have them preserved, and the suggestion was that once they're rebuilt and reputted and everything, of course, they're just single-pane windows, that then we'd have these, these storm windows that would go in front of them, that would protect the old windows from the weather and the elements, and of course, would help insulation, so I think, I think we were all well on board. The only one that didn't, and then the architect was very straightforward, absolutely no, the, the repointing of all the mortar joints was nothing more than cosmetic, it wasn't structurally needed.
Well, I thought the outside, I, I, I think the outside mortar joints need to be pointed, and like I said, if there are any gaps, holes, or anything which can develop in mortar joints, then you've got water coming inside, but those joints down in the basement where we were at, I didn't see that, but the outside, I just made, my opinion.
He did offer to give us a.
Outside on it, yes.
A unit price.
I would get separate, but, but for the night, for these, so they can move on, because that other one is just a matter of, again, cosmetic.
That's what I thought for glazing was cosmetic, it's storm windows.
Yeah, yeah, we all wondered that one, didn't we?
I thought glazing was, we were gonna buy a kind of window pane and put it in there or something, but it's just storm windows.
I hope I sent out an email on what glazing windows were back sometime. It's obvious that nobody read it, so.
Don't bet on it.
No, we did read it, I read it.
What is the total?
On behalf of the Budget Committee, I could not call a commission meeting at the courthouse site, because it is old, it is a construction site, and it is off-site to the public, I could not.
Hundred and seventeen, forty.
For public attendance to that, and it, it just had to be limited to the committee that was considering the funds to, to re, to do this, if, if y'all can. You understand what I'm saying, don't you, Mayor? I mean, I, I just couldn't double it up for a public meeting, and inviting the whole commission would have created that.
Yeah, it's kinda tight down in the basement.
Sunshine law violation. Thank you for saving all of us, Susan. Appreciate you. Thank you.
That's the hundred and sixty.
Gary had a question. What is?
I wanted to know what the total was, so.
It's a hundred and sixteen, nine forty.
Hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty.
And I, my assumption, Tracy Blair, I think we talked about different places, we got some capital projects money we can do that with.
Yes, there, there's capital projects funds, these, I'll prepare an amendment and take it to the Budget Committee next month, if that's okay? But one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty dollars, is that the total?
I'm sorry, Tracy, my mind was at courthouse, just.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You were talking to me, I was.
That's, 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 that's it, yes.
One hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty dollars, that's the total. And these are repairs to the courthouse that the county will be responsible for?
That is correct.
Age-related is the word we're using.
With no reimbursement from the insurance company.
That's right.
Correct, right. Okay.
Make a motion, we approve D.
I done did the motion, oh.
Second to motion.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the age-related repairs in the courthouse. We got a second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion?
Keep in mind, we've got the permit in hand.
Let's get started. Let's build the courthouse.
Well, now it's a matter of materials. It could be in one, two months.
We've lost a whole year here with doing nothing, so another year, I guess, give or take.
I wouldn't say doing nothing.
Call for a vote.
Process to get here.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, our usual is, yes to approve, no to deny, call the roll.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Okay, carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Tinker is out sick tonight, so Commissioner Whitfield will take us through the storage building for county records.
I wanted to get back to, we, we formed this little small committee, it was myself, Commissioner Tinker, and Commissioner Satterfield. And this was strictly to just evaluate the architects. So we did this based on a point system, that we all just, just took the architects, graded their, their process and how they do things. So the, the highest score was Johnson's Architect. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Johnson's Architect contingent upon Ms. Husky finishing up some reference information that, that we've asked for, so, so I wanna put that in the form of the motion.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we got a motion to approve Johnson Architects, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion?
One question, sir. Is this only approving the architect, or does it include funds?
It only includes the architect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And, and contingent upon Ms. Husky finishing up their references.
We're handing it off to Susan now, and she.
I, I might add, if it's okay, that the cost, Tracy, for accounting purposes, the cost has not been determined yet. Architect fees are based on the type of construction project you're doing, and the region you're building it in, and that is negotiable, so when a percentage, it's usually a percentage of the estimated or cost of the construction, you still have an opportunity to go back and negotiate even a lower percentage rate of what they ask you for, so that is negotiable, and that will be more solid for you later.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion and the second is to approve Johnson Architects. Call the roll, yes is to approve it, no is to deny it.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Okay, carries. David Mears.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a letter written, and contrary to a lot of disbelief, I did take the time to write the letter. I know it's hard to say, but I did, word for word. Now, I'm gonna be very careful in, in the way I present this. We have a older population, I'm gonna defer the word older, and use the word maturing population in Loudoun County. That is politically correct, I do believe. We have three doctors in the city of Loudoun, Dr. Ramon, Dr. Patel, and Dr. Stimson, that have served this community very diligently over a number of years. And what I'm proposing is that we vote tonight to approach Covenant and request from them, they relocate the current building that Dr. Patel and Dr. Ramon are located in, and that we request a double the space, they find property in the city of Loudoun, and they pay for all expenses. Also, I request, over the next three, five, to seven years, if we look at that time period, these doctors that have been serving our community are gonna be retiring, and what I request is that, in this letter, that Covenant help relocate younger physicians to come in to help with the maturing population that we have. This would be for the city of Loudoun, Loudoun County, and a great portion of Teleco Village. And with this, it would provide us with additional services that we need now and in the future. As many of you know, or some may not, we have, we did agreement with Covenant. They're building 25 private rooms on the hospital currently. The design work will be done this year, and hopefully, they'll be starting the actual construction next year. And what I'm hoping, if this goes through, and they agree, this will give Covenant a very solid foundation to work with these three areas now and in the future. But we, if we don't look at these needs, and I'm hoping that with this increase, we can maybe look at providing additional ambulances and other things that we need to cut down on response time in Loudoun County as a whole. I'm not talking about just certain areas, I'm talking about the entire population of Loudoun. We're growing, health services are very important, and I think this could be one step toward trying to meet that needs. Now, I'm hoping this will be approved unanimously tonight. I will take it, I talked to Mayor Harris today, I will take this to the City Council Workshop Monday night, and I feel, talking with a couple of the councilmen, mayor, that they will also support this. And I think if we show a united front in this endeavor, we can provide additional services for the population in this area, and as a whole, in the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a form of motion?
Yes, sir, it is.
Does Covenant operate that, are they in charge of that now?
From what I understand, Bill, but now, it may be, I do know Dr. Patel and Dr. Ramon are employees of Covenant, as well as the nurses, but the actual building, I think there may be some, I don't know exactly on that. I was under the understanding at first, there may, they own the building, but they may not, I don't know.
You said, you said, you made a motion, Van?
David made the motion.
You seconded it?
I didn't.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. And it's to send a request to Covenant to establish a new.
Medical facility, yes.
Medical facility in Loudoun.
Yes, we like to spend our money.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, yes is to send the letter, no is not to send the letter. Call the roll, Tammy.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
No.
Satterfield?
It's a private business. Some of our business, telling what to do with our money. I can't, I just can't do that.
We don't have adequate.
This would've been a better conversation to have, respectfully, with Jeffrey Feig in person first. Jeffrey's done the bit over backwards.
He's retired.
Still, it doesn't matter if he's retired, he would've bent over backwards to help us. This would've been a way better conversation to have privately with a private business, with a private company, who springs their private dollars in the millions in this county, than to force-feed them a government piece of paper that says, "Give us your money." I can't vote for it, the answer's no.
Okay.
The answer's no.
Julia's a no.
I hear you, but my, my, no.
Hold on.
It would have been a better conversation to have privately.
Your no is accepted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Satterfield, just to kind of point, we gave Covenant all that land and property out there just a few months ago, uh, free gratis, so I don't feel bad about asking for this, yes.
And I'm also, regardless of what some of the commissioners feel, I am trying to look out for the health services for this community, as well as the county as a whole. And yes, they are a private industry, that's true, but my main emphasis is health services for this area and the county as a whole. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes.
Please say yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, the motion carries, eight to one? Eight to one. The worst thing to do is send it back with a big no on it.
Yep.
I'm sitting down tomorrow with, uh, Jeffrey and the new administrator, we're going to sit down and just have a big conference.
We'll talk about it when you're there.
Very. A meeting, so, it won't, it won't come as a surprise.
Yeah. Okay. Tracy Blair?
Thank you, sir. I think item A under my name was removed from the agenda because it's there as item C, thank you. The next item is.
Julia, settle down.
Recommendation to approve application and acceptance of forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollar, um, fiscal year two thousand and three litigant. There are no matching funds required in the budget committee recommends approval.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second, we got a motion to approve and a second. Satterfield.
I can't hear.
Okay. Any? Any further discussion? Okay, yes is to approve, no is to deny, call or roll.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of recommendation to approve statutory bond for the director of accounts and budgets.
Make a motion to approve the statutory bond for Ms. Blair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster for the bond for the Director of Accounts and Budgets. This is required. Any further discussion? Okay, Tammy, call or roll, yes is to approve, opposed to deny.
Sorry. Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
And the next item is consideration of recommendation to acknowledge the TCRS employer contribution.
Make a motion to approve the TCRS employee contribution, employer contribution.
Second.
I was just going to make a motion to, uh, acknowledge the recognition that we've acknowledged.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster to acknowledge the TCRS employer contribution rate affected July first, twenty twenty-two. There was no change. Any discussion? Yes is to approve, no is to deny, call or roll.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Shaver?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item is to consider recommendation to approve amendments in three funds that are listed, county general, public libraries, and the highway department.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve one, two, three under E.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a commission, a recommendation, motion from Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster to approve one, two, and three. Any discussion? Okay, yes is to approve, no is to deny, call or roll.
Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda, consideration of approving resolutions for amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Um, these are amendments that have been approved by county commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion, we approve these, given we discussed them at the workshop, budget committee, and they were all, uh, approved previously, I'll make a motion to approve one through eleven under F.
One through eleven, second that motion. We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner.
Satterfield.
Satterfield to approve one through eleven.
That guy from Greenback.
Yeah, the guy from Greenback.
Across the river.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, yes is to approve, no is to deny, call or roll.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
And also, item G is consideration of approval of application and accept, acceptance of a thirty thousand dollar grant from Tennessee Highway Safety Office.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we accept the grant.
I'll second.
Application for the grant.
You might, if they do a review of this, you might want to do the spell check and make it matching funds instead of marking.
I know, sir.
I was getting ready, thought we were in the band business.
I wanted you to catch something, so, you're very aware, so.
She tried real hard, I'm almost like.
You don't find a lot of them, it's okay.
We got a motion from Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Brewster to approve the application for a thirty thousand dollar Tennessee Highway Safety Office grant. Any further discussion? Yes is to approve, no is to deny, call or roll.
So this was Shaver and Brewster?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Brewster?
Aye.
Mears?
Aye.
Hurley?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
And Waller?
Aye.
And finally, uh, I'm requesting the records to reflect that summary financial statements for the month of March. We distributed it prior to the meeting, as well as copies of the approved minutes from the February budget committee meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Commissioner Mears?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have sixteen names to be presented tonight for approval for bonds and notaries, I'd like to make that a motion.
Second.
You need to read the names.
I don't know.
They don't read them anymore.
You need to read the names.
Is there anybody in Loudoun County that's not a notary?
I don't know, you can't find them though, that's a thing.
Second is Waller, right? Yeah. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Mears to approve the bonds and notaries, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're a good guy.
Okay, they carry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we, uh, uh.
Anybody, does anybody, uh, we're finalizing reservations, twenty-four, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth of May is the TCSA Post Regulatory Conference.
Is this the one in Vegas? Or is it the one in here?
There is nobody, don't.
In Gatlinburg, at the, uh, Harvick.
Bring your firefighting equipment with you.
No doubt.
Don't burn your truck on it.
If somebody, if, let me know tonight or by email in the morning, it's close enough.
Fair enough.
I've got a few extra rooms, just in case, need to send those back, sorry to close around.
Thank you, Mayor.
Make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second on adjourning? Okay, we got a second, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Didn't have to turn the air conditioner up for ladies, so water pop, don't freeze them, huh?
Really?
Thank you.
I've got answers, some kind of.